Welcome to the Town of Crewe, Virginia's regular council meeting, December 14, 2015. We will start this evening by introducing Pastor Evan Murnier, who is the pastor of the Heavenbound Church. He will lead us in an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which you will be stating.
We bow our heads. Ahead in the Father we do come to you as humbly as we know how, seeking your guidance, your wisdoms, and your understandings. We ask that you just continue to stay with us throughout this meeting, that we be blessed throughout it. And we ask it all in the precious name of Jesus. In your name we shall pray always. Let us all say.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I begin this evening by opening the public hearing in the Town of Crewe. This public hearing is to convene at 7:00 PM, December 14, 2015, in the conference room of the Crewe Library. It is to hear public comments on the proposed changes to the current R1 residential zoning ordinance. The proposed change areas as follow. Delete in Article 2 Residential District R1 Statement of Intent, no home occupations are permitted, and home occupations are permitted. Revise Article 2 Statement of Intent from, to prohibit all activities that are of commercial nature, to prohibit most activities of commercial nature, with the exception of home occupations. Amending 2-1, using regulations to add the following use. Home occupations conducted by the owner, a permit shall be required, subject to the conditions listed in Article 15 under the definition of home occupations. Add to Article 15 definitions. Home occupation means an occupation carried on by an occupant of the dwelling or an accessory building as a secondary use in the connection with the occupation. Such occupation shall be subject to the regulations listed below. All home occupations shall be subject to the following limitations for Article 10 of the zoning ordinance for an R1 district in the Town of Crewe. Number one, a home occupation must be conducted by the home occupant. Permit applicant within the dwelling, which is the primary resident of the applicant or in an accessory building thereto, which is normally associated with a residential use, and shall be clearly subordinate to the principal use of the lot as a dwelling. Number two, except for articles produced on the premises, no stock in trade shall be stored, displayed, or sold on premise. Number three, there shall be no exterior evidence that the property is used in any way other than for dwelling. Number four, no mechanical or electrical equipment shall be employed other than machinery or equipment customarily found in the home, associated with a hobby or avocation, not conducted for gain or profit or customary for a small office. Number five, no outside display or storage of goods, equipment, or materials used in connection with the home occupation shall be permitted. Number six, the home occupation permit applicant and other person to use the dwelling as their primary resident may be involved in the home occupation use. In addition, one non-resident person, whether paid or not for their services, may be involved in the home occupation use on the property, provided that there is only one such person on the property, and the hours of such attendance shall be limited to 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Number seven, the dwelling in which the home occupation is being conducted shall be open for inspection to the town personnel during reasonable hours. Number eight, a permit for a home occupation is valid for only the original applicant and is not transferable to any resident, address, or any other occupation. Upon termination of the occupant's residency, the home occupation permit shall be null and void. Number nine, no signs shall be permitted. Number 10, other than reasonable visits or numbers of vehicles, there shall be no customer or client parking or on the premise related to the home occupation being conducted at the address. Number 11, if there are any changes proposed in the dwelling or in the plumbing or in the electrical system, appropriate permits will be required. Approval of this permit or of any other permit does not relieve the applicant from compliance with the provisions of any applicable ordinances of the Town of Crewe or the Commonwealth of Virginia. Number 12, a permit for a home occupation shall be revoked by the zoning administrator because of failure of the owner or operator of the use covered by the permit to observe all requirements of the permit and the zoning ordinance. Okay, it is open to any public comment at this time.
You said no signs, right? As I didn't create vehicles, nothing could have been put in him on the vehicle.
What did it state about the parking? You heard something about the parking?
Well, talks about reasonable visits or number of vehicles, there should be no customers or clients parked or on the premises relative to the home occupation being conducted at the address. I guess that's what you're talking about.
Does that mean somebody can't come to the home occupation? Or that a client can't come to the home occupation?
That's what it means.
What if it's their business? What if it's like haircuts?
Not in R1. Strictly R1. Which is basically going from no type of business to an in-home occupancy business that really nobody knows is for the whole internet.
And this doesn't eliminate the option for a special use permit or an exemption.
You can always apply for them.
Exactly, which is another process. But this simply allows for home occupations with no clients.
And that would go before the zoning laws under fuses.
Well, I have a hard time understanding how, one myself, I'm an insurance agent. We all know that, obviously. I would have clients come to my home once in a while. I don't have them very often, but I do have them. But I have a hard time understanding how anybody would run a business and never have anybody show up at their door, for any business.
Internet-based businesses.
Internet-based businesses too. I mean, people can...
Depends on the nature of the business.
I would, I mean, it's like not having a business at all if no one ever shows up.
Any more comments? So do you have any comments?
Is there any change in this from the last meeting?
The one.
What is that change?
The...
Commercial vehicles.
There was a specific line about commercial vehicles that was taken out.
Correct, yeah. At the Claiming Commission public hearing, there was an issue with the commercial vehicles being, you know, parked at the premises and things like that. And then there was a question of, well, how do you define commercial vehicles? And so upon recommendation, that was completely excluded.
That was a commercial vehicle over six tons.
That, well, it said "commercial vehicle" in there, but it didn't really define it as six tons. And then at the public hearing, there was a question about, well, what is a public, a commercial vehicle? Do you mean like a vehicle with a sign for the business on it? Or is it a commercial vehicle that was, you know, that's described pursuant to 46.2 or exactly what it was? And so that specific provision that was presented adverse to the Claiming Commission through the public hearing was eliminated when it was advertised for the public hearing for in-person town council.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, again, about parking, that's just a huge issue. I mean, how can you, for almost any business? I mean, I would say 98% of the businesses out there are not going to be in 100% compliance with no vehicles coming. Say something. You're shaking your head yes.
Just, there's a lot of people that, I mean, she's right on the aspect that it's impossible to have a business without, with nobody coming. I mean, any business, even if it was insurance, if they had a question and let's say they don't have a cellphone, if they need to get in touch with her, they have to come by. So, I mean, and maybe it could be limited, like a limited...
I can understand a limited amount of visits.
Like no more than two, two guest visits at a time, no one visit.
Or two a day.
And you have to remember, this is R1. We are talking about R1, which now has no, I mean, you are not permitted to have any. So this opens it up to a home occupation. And if you are in R1, it's also my understanding, and you have a situation like this, you can come and apply for a variance. Can you not?
And that's what the board, right, the zoning, yeah, so I mean...
I mean, you have an avenue.
You'll have to state your case to them. I mean, we know, you say you get about eight people a month?
Yeah, maybe eight to 10 people a month. Somebody might come for five minutes and drop a payment and leave. I never have meetings here.
I don't think you'll have a problem with zoning committee with that, that party.
Yeah, I mean, I've resorted to opening an office in Mosley, but I would rather have, well, you know, I would rather have, would like to think I could have an office here, continue to have, or have an office here. I don't even have one here anymore. I work out of Mosley, you know, and it's a mess. So I would like to think that the town would regain revenue that could be earned off of me by me not, you know, just being full force over there.
But this gives, this gives the area that's designated R1, which is residence, the option to have a home internet business. And if that home internet business needs maybe extra considerations, that business can apply for a variance. And the zoning board will look at it on a case by case, is what it does. So in other words, if someone who has a residential home there and all of a sudden begins seeing, one, two, three, home base with, they have a means of coming to the zoning board and giving their view of what's happening in their neighborhood. So it's just not a blank check to where all of a sudden, an R1 residential, what the town has set up, is no longer residential. It's become commercial.
So I think, if I may, you have to go back to the original definition of an R1. And it's pretty simply, it's a residential area that's designed to be quiet with no traffic. Nothing going on. Now, times have changed. We've had this discussion with the advent of the internet and the businesses that are taking place. I think what we're saying here is this is an exception to that because it still maintains the original value of an R1.
You mean, you mean this agency? I mean, is it...
Yours or anybody's.
Okay, well, because I, you know, you sit and you think you got...
Because you told me it was going to be all internet.
Well, mine is all internet.
But then you want to...
But I do have people come over periodically and make payments. I mean, I might have people...
One or two at a time?
Sometimes three a week.
Then you probably should not say anything. It just won't be anything like it happens. Because nobody would say anything.
I will also point out that when the Economic Development Committee looked at this proposed ordinance, we did look at the option of allowing certain number of clients. The problem with that is enforcement. If you say, okay, well, we'll allow two clients a day, who's going to sit out there and count the number of clients coming in and out?
Probably a nosy neighbor, but that's okay. You know, I mean, if somebody really wanted to concern themselves that much over it. But, you know, you had, even internet-based businesses, like I have no freight or anything being shipped to my home. So I certainly would never have a UPS truck showing up at my door two or three times a day. That doesn't happen. You know, whereas other internet-based businesses, where they're selling products online and stuff, can have UPS trucks showing up and all, you know, that kind of stuff.
Do we have any other citizen comments? I don't mean to cut you short, but I understand. Any other comments? Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Just, just one question. I'm sorry. The only question I asked was, is that it was, what was the desired reason for instituting this in the first place?
We look, we, this has been a long process. There was absolutely no type of occupation allowed in an R1. That was what it was zoned for. And the world has changed since these ordinances were put on the books. It's easy for people to have a small internet business. It may be just selling a few things, doing everything by mail, and you have no customers actually coming in, or you may make a craft or something that you sell and all. And we were trying to bring it into the 21st century. We also have people, we wanted to give away to where if people do have a business and they ended up in R1, and they needed a special variance, it was a way that they then could come to the zoning board. This has been updated, that they could come to the zoning board and make a special appeal after this was passed, okay, to allow home occupation in the home. There was no, I mean, you could be a little cookie maker who all of a sudden got popular with your cookies or your cupcakes and all, but you couldn't, with the way our code was, do anything like that in your home. So it was to bring, you know, we felt like the community showed that there was a need, and we were doing our best to still preserve R1, which was why these homes were signified and these blocks were signified as R1 and not R2 and all where it was allowed to, you know, try to bring it into the 21st century. Counsel, do you agree with this?
It sounds like a control that can be monitored. And so they're trying to work with you. So, and you can come and apply. But you've also, like you're saying, protection of R1. You've got to have some controls because we know that you don't. So this gives you outs.
Okay, I close.
Motion, we have closed the public hearing.
Okay, so motion has been moved second by Vice Mayor. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And those by negative, motion carries. I now call to order the regular town council meeting for December 14, 2014. Excuse me, I'm a year behind, 2015. I am, I knew I was slow and couldn't catch up. Okay, any opening comments from the citizens on the new meeting? Yes, Mrs. Yates?
I would just like to announce the Wash Bucket Initiative, we finally did it. We, you all know about the Wash Bucket Initiative, okay? Well, we finally put our first tree up, and it's at Citizens Bank. And we're pretty proud of the windows that we did and created. I think they look pretty good. So I'd like to invite you all to go look at it and walk by. And we've got a sign up there that says we're auctioning the tree up, and then we're looking for, you know. So anybody here could spread the word for us, we would love it. We're trying to raise money for, to make the town look better, so.
What is the date that the auction closes?
We're going to close at the 21st. And whoever bids on the tree and wins it, we will bring the tree to their house and we'll take it down, take it to their house, put it back up in there where they want, or wherever they want it, you know. We'll put it up for them. So that's a part of the process.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we're pretty proud. The tree looks pretty good. I don't know if anybody here has seen it.
Okay, Mr. Foss?
Yes, I'd like to say that the parade went off very well. And I'd like to, special thanks to the chief and his staff. I think they did a fine job. Very discreetly, I noticed something, but it was under control and everything went smooth.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Pamela Martin. I just opened up Autism Consulting and Tutoring Services. And I have a concern about the business water bill. For small businesses trying to start, the minimum bill being $114 a month. And for repeated months, I mean, since like last March, my consumption is zero. I mean, I don't even use enough water to read a meter reading and still being charged $114 a month. I just think that that's a little expensive for new small companies trying to get into Crewe and opening up, and I just wanted to put it out there for consideration.
That includes your trash pickup.
Right, I don't even use that.
It's your whole utility bill.
Right.
Okay, because the average home user would be, their minimum would be $80 with their utility bills, so.
Were you looking at a wash machine, a, you know, dishwasher and all that? I don't use any of that. You know, just flushing our toilet and washing our hands don't even add up to one measurement to be charged as much. You know, and I don't produce enough trash to be picked up three times a week. You know, so, I mean, in consideration of other small businesses wanting to come to Crewe, this is a really big deterrent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Any other public comments? Okay, counsel, before you, you have the consent calendar. On the consent calendar are matters to be considered that are routine and will be approved by one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of the members of the council and be voted on separately. You have the minutes of the regular town council meeting held Monday, November 9, 2015. You have the bill sheet, which you have received additions. The original amount that you had was $139,838.37, and you have received an addition of $97,227.95. That brings this month, December 14, 2015, total bill sheet to $237,066.32. So you can take a minute and look over if you have any additions or corrections. Please let us know. If not, I'd like a motion for the consent calendar.
And move a motion to approve the consent calendar presented with the necessary corrections in the bill sheet.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to accept the consent calendar with the addition of the additional bills. Do you have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, white sign. Pass. Town manager's report.
Just I'll start with, we've got some guests tonight. They want to make an introduction, Bill.
All right, we go up to the podium, all right?
Whenever.
We have, we have. You all right with that, Aaron?
I'm fine with that.
I always got to look at people, though. I don't know what it is about me. I'm Steve Bowen, and thank you, Mayor, for inviting us up here, and Town Manager Wade, and all town council members. Good seeing you. It's hard for me to call you Little Art. I mean, that's the way I know the voice. Be offended by that, Chief. But anyway, we're just a small community. Everybody knows everybody. My name, of course, is Steve Bowen, and I've been at Piedmont Hospital now for 28 years. I'm the facilities manager, and I'm all with the physical plant part, the housekeeping, food service, and power plant, et cetera. And I've also managed most of the projects at Piedmont, including the new facility, VCBR, when it was first built. Out of all the projects I've managed before, that water tank has been that thorn in the flesh. I'm just going to tell you like it is. I made a comment when we first built that thing, the paint started peeling off. And what had happened, it wasn't the people who painted it, it's when it came out to factory, the prime coating came loose. So it was this argument of, does the painter fix something that he had no, you know, and then, and anyway, so we had to iron all that out, and in time we figured out what had happened, the company who sent us the materials went bankrupt. So that's just the way life goes. I made a comment when we started on that project, I write it 2010, 2011, something like that in a neighborhood, and I said, we're not painting the Mona Lisa. It shouldn't be taking too long. However, I just did some research, and DaVinci did the Mona Lisa in four years. He beat. That's pretty bad. But anyway, I'm coming to the council tonight and the mayor to talk a little bit about the project, and, because I feel like now we're getting close. You see groundbreaking up there. And one of the things that Aaron Tice is going to talk about, he's a senior engineer at Wile and Wilson, and we've done a lot of business with Wile and Wilson over the years, and they've been a very good company to us as engineers, and we've been very, very happy with the product they put out. But anyway, I want him to talk a little bit about the project and what we're planning to do, so you can kind of get a handle. But I feel this time, by spring, we're going to paint that tank. I really do. And I really like to, for the town council to consider what we have to offer tonight. All right?
Yeah, well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak to you all about the tank project. Like Steve said, we've been working on this one for a long time, so we're excited to see the tank get painted. The gist of the project, the easy part of the project really, is actually the painting of the tank. The hardest part of the project is how do we maintain water pressure to both the customers, the town's customers and the folks along 460, as well as the Piedmont Hospital and the prisons, while we're painting the tank? Because we have to take the tank out of service to be able to paint it. So the work that y'all see, the groundbreaking that's been done, is we're doing two things to be able to take the tank out of service and maintain service to everyone while we're doing that. The first is that we're going to put a ground tank, which will be a tank at ground level, which will have a volume of the same volume as the tank that's the elevated tank. And then the second thing is that we're going to put in a pump station right next to it, which will look essentially like a C trailer, like a can trailer. In fact, it'll just be hauled in by semi and won't see much of it. But a pump station right next to the ground tank to maintain the water pressures throughout the system. And so really, a very, very simple solution. It's used in quite a few different places. Because of the kind of the institutional nature of the folks who are getting the water and using the water from the tank, the ground tank and the pump station will be quite a bit larger than some others you may have seen. If you've ever driven by a tank and seen kind of a big sausage-looking tank right next to it, they are sometimes smaller. In this case, we'll have three or two large tanks. That will kind of be the Oscar Mayer wiener truck, almost look like that. And those will be the tanks that are pressurized. It's like a well tank you might have in a basement. And so a hydromagnetic tank, and essentially it's the same principle. We'll be pumping from the town's water booster station, into our ground storage tank, our big 400,000 gallon ground storage tank. And then we'll be using our pump station to pump into these two smaller hydromagnetic tanks, which is what we call them, but essentially the booster tanks, which will provide water to the hospital and prisons and everybody else along 460. So that is the scope of the project. Right now, we have a contractor who's on site breaking ground. We'll see, we're going to start doing some foundation work for the big round storage tank in the next month or so. And then in February and March, we'll have the new pump station and the two smaller tanks on site. With the goal that by the time it warms up in the spring, we'll have that system ready and operational, and so that we can take the elevated tank offline and begin to paint it. You know, our goal, and we met on site with the mayor and Mr. Walker and some other folks, the town's engineer, and talked about it. And our goal in this is that, from the town's water system perspective, you know, that you wouldn't see a change. In the sense that how your pump station operates now is how it will operate throughout this project. And that we'll, you know, obviously, with Steve's folks, you know, we work very closely with y'all operating the system, but that it wouldn't impact your pump station or any of your, any of your infrastructure. So the one, the one item that I know we need to talk about today was in order to get the water from the town's pump station into our new temporary system, is that we'll need to tap the existing 12-inch line right next to the existing elevated tank. And that was what Steve, that y'all had asked us to come forward, the council, and make requests to perform that tapping operation. Before we have, I guess, Steve wants to talk about it.
Yeah, well, what I wanted, what I wanted to add to that is, Mr. Walker did call me about around, probably August, July. He said, Steve, I, we need to sit down and you need to get the right people to table with Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. And I said, okay. And at one time, they were talking about, and this is how this project has went, folks. At one time, they were talking about drafting. The hardest thing is keeping that sprinkler system pressure for the patients in case we have a fire. And they were talking about pulling water from the pond. And what the problem is, with Piedmont's unique, a lot of facilities, they have a separate sprinkler pipe than their domestic water system. But ours is not like that. So you had the possibility of a cross connection. If something went wrong, next thing you know, you got pond water up and the drinking water. And we couldn't do that. So, you know, Wile and Wilson went to the table and started drawing up, and that's, you know, Wade called, the perfect storm was coming. And then I was thinking, and I said, you know what?